I asked him if he was off all day on May 1st, if it could be during the afternoon maybe of your meeting.
Thanks for waiting.
Well, two weeks, permanent meeting.
Two weeks, May 1st.
May 1st.
He probably didn't fill those ones yet.
That's just a suggestion, because I know you can't really do that.
What time would it be for?
Three thirty, two o'clock. I will be with, having about the council. Anytime now on that day.
You guys can do it, I can't be here on, on the other end.
Okay.
I'm now halfway through my radiation.
Well, congratulations. Um, let's just see what they have available, we can do, it's just three of us at seven. You kind of know my feelings if I can't be there.
I'm not sending this week, but it'll be eighteenth, May eighteenth, starting like eight thirty and go to their meeting at ten.
Didn't look at that far. I can be here until one thirty. We're ready for you.
Okay.
Thanks for waiting.
I need a letter of support, I'm getting me permission to file our grant applications, which will fund our twenty twenty-four year community corrections. And we request two grant funds. Uh, the first one is the community corrections and reinvestment grant, which is to department corrections. And then the other grant we apply for is the pretrial services grant, which is to all support services. And when I submit grant applications, I have to submit a letter from the commissioner saying that we have permission to submit that.
This thing has grown way bigger than what I thought it would ever grow when I first went on the trip. I think for me. I make a motion to endorse the letter.
I'll thank you. Do you have a motion and a second to endorse the letter?
Yep.
Support, right?
Thank you.
Uh, the board of commissioners met today for the scheduled meeting, the board supports the submission of the CBI twenty twenty-four community corrections and reinvestment grant application, giving the Carol County Community Corrections Department Board the permission to submit the applications. That's what we're doing. All in favor of the, of the motion, please say aye. Aye, motion passed.
You're gonna sign that?
Need two of them?
This one.
Yeah.
That's probably, you can copy some of the contract, don't you, Matt?
Are you need to? I just made them.
You just, please do overfill.
Aye.
One for Beth and one for her.
I know, okay.
Thank you, Ms. Galley. How many people do you got on this program, Matt?
Uh, we've got fifty-nine community corrections, seventy-four, I was just sixty-nine, sorry, sixty-nine, three thousand. She's, how about stat, I think.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pardon me, Beth Myers.
Hey, I have a claim from the circuit court judge. And he gave me a court order, um, asking me to issue a, a check for three thousand dollars for an expert witness. Uh, so I need to get this approved, so I can write that check today.
Where's that one coming?
They're gone.
All, I would want to approve Mr. Howard's.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the circuit court claim. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Where do I sign on this, or do I sign on this, the judge already signed it?
Just sign somewhere there, that means that you have a credit. Um, have you made that motion, Miss Meyer?
Okay. Um, before we get down to other commissioner actions, we have several things that I need to bring up to you, the first one's a real quick one. And that is that, uh, I don't know, Lauren, you've had an opportunity to go out south, but you imagine you have. And, uh, the, uh, Redevelopment Commission, you know, has started a project and now are very close to finishing it, the four-lane unit from the Packers to, to the, uh, twenty-five. And I just want to make sure it's in the record that we congratulate them on the project well done, and that it, it looks great. And I think it was a, a project that was very worthwhile to do, and I am appreciative of the fact that, uh, this organization is, is doing what they're supposed to be doing. Made a definite improvement in the community.
It makes it easier to travel that way.
Oh, it's much, much better, we got lines, we, they need to put lines down the effort, they haven't had the weather through, out of, uh, that lining associated. And Jack, do you have any to add to what I'm saying here, you're a good member there.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just glad to see that the EME was able to get the final paving done, and like you said, we're waiting on permanent markings. The only reservation I have is with the temporary markings, there was a number of close calls where people would go straight in the turn lane. And you had somebody actually following them.
Yeah, yeah.
And, uh.
It was confusing for a while out there.
Yeah, hopefully the permanent markings will help and be, be followed, but, yeah, it definitely had the ups and downs with issues with utility movement and drains getting clipped and, so, but, it's.
The utility companies didn't always do their best to cooperate, getting things done on. And, uh, I'm on this committee, I have nothing to do with the start of it, the planning of it, or the execution of it, it was all in way before I got on there, but they did a great job. And, uh, I haven't been able to keep up with it as much as I should because of my, uh, radiation, I won't be at the meeting today either. Gonna be down getting pride for a little bit, so.
Well, the meeting's Thursday.
Um, okay, and then to move, uh, move on, we, uh, uh, many of you I'm sure are aware of that, uh, things are happening down in Cutler. Uh, downtown is coming back to life, it's being rehabbed, and, uh, they have a festival coming up soon. Uh, they have a, a, a festival every, the last Saturday of every month. And, uh, it has been very well attended thus far, and they have a car show coming up this time. This will be the second car show they had during this, and the first one was very nice, had a lot of participants. So I'd like to ask my son Ross Brown to come up and, and, uh, he has something to present to us about needs for this show.
Yeah, I'm, uh, afraid I'm a little behind the goal on all the things, so, um, I, I should have had a map of what I'm talking about, but, um, I do have the map on my phone, and it is just the Google Maps, if you want to go over it. What, you know, something, dealing with a, with a small town, a small town atmosphere, you can't step on all your neighbor's toes. And so that's something that we have worked very hard to not do. Um, and so, yeah, in, in, uh, in October, we had a fifty-five car show, come, come to our last, uh, outdoor event of the season. And then, uh, to kick off our outdoor events again here in April, we decided to bring them back, uh, and do it again. And, um, we are anticipating that if the weather is nice, we're gonna have a lot more than the fifty-five cars. If the weather is poor, we'll have a lot less. Um, because we had nice, nice weather that particular day, and, uh, so we, we had a lot of cars out, and fifty-five cars was everything I could fit on my property. Okay? Um, so now we're thinking about going a little bit bigger, and how to do that without being too obtrusive to everybody else. So, I, I think the best way of doing that is to close, uh, the downtown block plus half of the next block, uh, to the, um, to the west. I own two, or, the, the, the blocks are, uh, four, um, lots long. I own the first two, uh, on the south side, uh, my neighbor owned the first two on the north side, he's fine with it. Um, and so I have one neighbor that might be slightly inconvenienced by that, and he's good with it. So, um, so I, I talked to fire department, they're fine with it. Um, I have not talked to the, uh, sheriff's department, see if they're good with that or not. But, um, you know, I kind of assume that if the fire department is not upset with that at all, that everybody else would be okay with it. Um, and again, you know, I've talked to all neighbors. Um, so, I guess that's what, I'm, I'm asking for a partial closure of the street down through there. And I say partial because we still do have the, um, uh, post office open until noon. And they have a truck that comes in, a pretty good sized truck, comes in at noon to pick up. Um, and, uh, so we'll have to move them in and out, and we won't be parking any cars in front of them. Uh, but what I'd like to do is put another road down the center of the street, I think we have room for that. And that's the reason for closing is so that we can put that extra road down the center. And then I think I can get seventy-five cars in and still be, you know, only slightly over into, huh?
You have the names of the streets, or the numbers of the streets?
I can, yeah, forty-five south would be the, the main street, uh, that would be closed. Um, I have, uh, going south on Fifth Street.
Fifth Street?
Yeah, uh, I would like possibly to close that. Um, that, again, that is the fire department, my property, and then one other, uh, landowner. Um, and, um, they're all good with it. Um, so far, I've been very fortunate, Lord bless us. Uh, and, uh, and we have worked with everybody enough that we haven't had neighbors mad at us about anything. Uh, when we've had an issue, then we've gone over and we've, you know, marked off their property, don't park here, you know, one of them, one, one neighbor has a, um, septic in their front yard. And so they don't want people parking in the front yard, sure, so we're out there every time, we go out there and cook them out and put, uh, you know, the do not cross line on there, um, or caution tape, I guess is the right thing. And, um, um, you know, we keep people off their property.
So it's just the forty-five south and the Fifth Streets, the one you need to block out?
Yes.
I make a motion to go through, if you do that on that day. You just need to make sure the sheriff's department knows and.
Okay.
Emergency services.
Okay.
Yeah, emergency.
What is the proper protocol? I, I try calling the sheriff's office, okay, the, the sheriff's number, and they have four, um.
Option one, I think, gets you to the dispatch, option two gets you to the jail, and three is to make.
Yeah, so what am I? I didn't, I didn't want to do something that would cause.
Option one.
Do option one and leave a message for the sheriff.
Okay, okay.
Or, and then you can get ahold of me and I can get the message for the sheriff.
Actually, the highway department's gonna be where it starts, I believe, you requested.
Okay.
And he brings it to us.
Okay.
When's the date on it?
Twenty-ninth.
Uh.
You got June or?
Twenty-ninth of May.
April.
April.
Because there's, I believe there's a permit that needs to be applied for through the highway department to close the county road.
I didn't hear that.
There's a permit.
I believe there's a permit that needs to be applied for through the highway to close the county road.
Yeah, because he'll bring it to us and ask and say if it's okay, but since we're just doing backwards, we didn't know.
I don't remember ever, I've proven here, one like that before, if they run for, maybe they have, but I don't remember. So then the highway guy is back, back here, we didn't talk to him about it, we, I, you still have barricades to put up and stuff?
I have some, and we can either build them ourselves, or if you would prefer, or the county would prefer to, um, for me, the county picks them up and put them up, I'd be glad to do that. Whatever is the.
I think the best of those actual highways, um.
Yeah, that's what we used to do, is we'd go up and we'd pick them up up there at the highway garage and then take them back to them afterwards, so. Is that all right, Scott? Okay, so you made a motion?
Yep, for the twenty-ninth.
I'll second.
Second? Okay, so I call for vote, all in favor of, uh, the motion to close, partially close the streets on the twenty-ninth in Cutler, Indiana? All in favor, say aye.
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 I'm gonna write on my, what's the time?
Uh, for going forward, if, I mean, it's been three or four years since they closed before, so it may not happen again for a while, but if we do, what is the protocol? What, what, what kind of time, uh, lead time do we need, uh, to do it properly, make sure that we're not stepping on anybody's foot?
Um, we, we like, I just want it ahead of the weeks.
Okay.
And we, you know, that way we know what's gonna happen, and I can bring it and ask them and.
Okay, absolutely.
So, just so you, Ross, to get it into him in time, and he can have it all written up and bring it to us on the meeting before, just like happens now.
What's your timeframe on, on the twenty-ninth, you have?
It'll be, uh, ten to five.
Ten to five.
And, uh, the, the post office is open until noon, so it'll be, you know, well, that's, uh, definitely some traffic coming in there. Uh, and, um, and like I said, I, I really don't know, that, that was something that was kind of neat about the, uh, the, the group that came in, uh, in, in October, was that we had a shortened time period for them to commit, from noon until, I think, four. Um, and that's actually kind of long for a, um, car show. And, um, um, they actually requested that they be there for the whole time this time, uh, because they liked the show, they liked doing it, it, it was fun, they enjoyed it. And, you know, I, I would, I would very pleased with that, but then that made it a little bit more complicated on how to, you know, it working, but, uh, so, uh, send if I have the maximum time there.
Okay, that's good.
Thank you, Ross.
Thank you.
Yes.
I live on five hundred south, and I hope that traffic is absolutely unbearable.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
The cars are loud.
And, and so that's the kind of, uh, support I've got from the community, and it, it's really wonderful.
Yeah, good answer, Brett.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, next item I want to bring up is I have quite a lengthy con, uh, uh, conversation with Dr. Mark Myers over the weekend, and, uh, he is running, uh, he is speaking in terms of Carroll Manor, and he has, uh, several grants that, uh, he and others in their friends of, uh, I'm not saying the term they got a name for, but anyway, friends of Carroll Manor have come up with, uh, potential grants for it.
Yeah, I got it, yeah.
Uh-huh.
I got a, a thing from him, too.
Yeah, well, so they want, uh, they want us to, uh, they want to know that we'll endorse grants. Uh, now, I, I said we can't just give you a blanket thing for that because, uh, suppose there's a, a match to it, you know, we, we have to.
Match.
Yeah, and he, his, his reaction to that was, th- this friends group will pay all of the match. And he didn't see that they were gonna have to ask us or the county for any matching funds.
Wasn't that for study on the, 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 so?
Yeah, there's a study, right now they're looking at it for a.
Structural.
Yeah.
For, yeah.
Yeah. So, uh, I guess what I'm asking for is, uh, let's just do the first one on the structural study, and just say that we will endorse that, uh, grant, providing that we, that the county does not have to pay.
Is that your motion?
No, that's why I, I want a YouTube's motion.
What, what's the name of this grant?
Uh, I don't know.
You think he can be here the next meeting, or somebody from them?
I could ask you.
I think that'd be, I'm, I'm in favor of, but I think we just have a Facebook or something.
Thank you, yeah, okay, I might want to make that. From my understanding, it was up to four thousand dollars, so they have, about the average for destruction, which is a place to start. Yeah, there's an issue with the, the structural, we need to get that here.
Right. One of the ramps, he gets to be, for sure, as you said.
And that, that's a grant to come after that.
I guess we just need details, because you're supposed to approve all things.
Right, yeah.
Apply for all things, and I don't know if, once you're trying to exaggerate, you want to put here.
So they can show up, make the meeting first, and kind of give us a little bit more detail on it, is that, is there, is there a time limit on it, Bill?
Huh?
Was there a time limit on this?
No, I'll make you out, I'm sure there is, but I don't think it's that close.
Because you kept me nice to know what they're gonna do to the building. Besides just structural.
Okay. We'll leave it at that, I will get back in touch with him and ask for him or someone representing him to come.
Was there, you said there was an amount of four thousand dollars? Is that what you said?
Uh, that's the way I understood.
And Jen could try to get me to come out this weekend, I just couldn't get out there.
Your grant is for four thousand?
I thought so.
I don't know.
Okay, wow, that.
I'm not sure. I have a, this one.
It didn't matter, all this constructional.
Yeah.
Grant from this person.
Right, yeah. Uh, some family, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, uh, family danger, some of the same family, uh, family dangerous places for having, uh, provides huge, uh, installation of the, engineering space and restoration cost estimate, has, uh, the four thousand, you know, eighty percent.
I think we're moving. We're moving into directorship, it doesn't matter. Bashing everybody on Facebook, social media, and, as is Kevin.
Okay, I will take care of that. Uh, and the last item I have to come up, um, Gary Rager talked to me over the weekend. And, uh, Gary is a tenant in a farm right across from Carroll Manor, where we're wanting to, uh, to acquire an easement for the sewage out through there. And what he expressed to me was that, look, Gary's not out here now, uh, we have not had cooperation from the owner of the property, and it looks like that if necessary, we went to, to, for the jail project, we might have to, uh, uh, take that to court to, to get that. Um, yeah, confirmation, but, uh, so Gary said that if we would change the plan enough, it's right now there's risers coming up out of the sewer line that stick up down through there, so it's impossible to farm out through there. It's also very difficult to keep it mowed and everything because of going in and out around these risers up there. So, uh, we're looking at either, either have a, first of all, a reading mess all the way down there, or the county library is gonna have to, uh, move it. The second thing is that he was under the impression from talking to the owners that if that was changed to where those were below ground, uh, and they could farm over the top of it, they would have no problem with it.
You use, that you have to have access to it, that's why.
You have to have access to it, but he expressed to me, he said, you know, we have such good GPS, that if there's a problem and you have to get down to it, how tough would it be to get out in the back, or with GPS and say, right, here it is? And get it, if we put it down. Something told me in a recent meeting that that line is gonna have to be maybe thirty feet deep down through there. Now, I don't understand why.
Yeah, I wish to be in Kansas, because everyone could be installed.
Yeah.
They'd be in my question.
I, okay. To me, we want that to run downhill to the line, I don't know why it has to be thirty feet deep all the way down through there.
He doesn't. Yeah, I don't know why I said to be in Kansas, he doesn't.
Anyway, I wanted to bring it to you to have you think about this, uh, we could, could alleviate all the costs of going to court and all the time spent on that, if we would just alter it to dropping down the manhole to below the surface. Below the surface is not that they could farm over the top of it, so we're not talking about this part, we're talking about dropping down.
We're conscious.
Yeah. It seemed a reasonable request to me, and I can understand why the owners of the, I mean.
Why didn't they just sell us that section? Did you ask me that question?
Why didn't, why didn't they just sell it to us? Uh, I would not ask you that, I could ask you that. See.
Everything aren't there?
They have preferred, the owners have preferred that Barry do all their negotiations here, and Barry has, I don't wanna say not done it, but he, he's been very hesitant to say much. And we haven't got much feedback from them. So I would, I think now I have a route here to talk to them, which is through Gary Rager.
I think we need to have Dusty come in and explain if we can, can do that.
Have.
Yeah, we, we, like, construction.
Okay, can we request, you think, for them to come to the next meeting, so I can tell Gary he gotta be there at the next meeting?
Yeah, I think so.
Wasn't, uh, the redevelopment?
Pardon me?
Wasn't the redevelopment paying for that?
Yeah, redevelopment is offered to pay for it, yeah.
So, for they.
We should probably have.
Part of, to go back with Barry, part of the issue was Barry was RDC council, plus represented the landowner, so that was why Barry was kind of hesitant to do so. Um, the RDC has, in principle, endorsed the idea of helping with the cost at least, if not paying all of it. But have been waiting for numbers and everything to be in place before actually doing the final approval. But, so, it's all.
Well, it would be nice if you could bring it up this afternoon, in our meeting this afternoon?
Thursday afternoon.
Thursday afternoon, I'm sorry, I'll take it, yeah, Thursday afternoon, to them and tell them that this, this is our, this is the, the fly, I mean, like, the whole thing, you know, that. For putting myself in the position of the landowner, I can see why that, uh, he doesn't, he hasn't before expressed that he did not want to sell one foot of his land, which he may stick to. But at the same time, by us putting those risers up down through those manholes, we have effectively just destroyed the use of that, of the ground, and I don't remember how light it is.
It's like fifty feet.
Fifty feet, yeah.
Uh, I'll say it somewhere, fifty feet of the, of the, of the.
Phil, I just, I don't want to speak out of turn here, but my background with the city, uh, I do know that, uh, in the Ballin property.
Yeah.
Uh, since the nineteen sixties, there's been water and sewer infrastructure that are laid underneath that field out there, it's been far over for years. As far as I know, they've never had a problem, never had a problem with it, where we've actually had to go in and open up a manhole, but the, the streets are planted in the Ballin property, so I, I don't think it's unreasonable to ask for that. And it's, it's been done before. the, the streets are platted in the Ballin property, so I, I don't think it's unreasonable to ask for that, uh, and it's, it's been done before.
Thank you. It's not in a, in a.
High traffic area.
Normal sort of sense, but we have, there's a jail there and the property to have down here with grains, this is probably gonna have bigger grains and stuff, plus plant more, more, uh, people. The problem is that the people who stay there do weird things because they have a lot of time.
They make flush more stuff than they should.
Yeah, so that floods things up. So the reason we want access easily, if these plants know that, if you destroy some crop there, who's responsible for that?
Yeah, we have to, hey, you're the one to pick it up.
Yeah, it looked like.
A- as a developer, I, I like where you're going with it. I hate to see you go down the path of considering buying ground from them. Because then, then we set a precedence with all the landowners.
Right.
And, and they hit the developer, they hit all the city, they, they hit the town floor, the city of Delphi and everybody, you have a right to that, taking that easement and you should accommodate farming it. You try to do any maintenance or work seasonally where you're not disrupting crops and if you got a break or an emergency and you have to unplug it, you're reimbursing a few hundred bucks.
That's not that bad.
If you damage an acre of corn, and I honestly can't see hardly damaging anyways near an acre. So, accommodate farming it, put it deep is a reasonable thing. We, we do try to do that even as, as private developers, but, uh, and then, and then you accommodate that and then they need to cooperate or you can take the easement.
Well, I'm sure that the engineering on it took into account that the people using it, the flushing the straw, put mattress, just down in it and, you know, jumpsuits and everything goes down in there.
I think one of my questions was from the jail, they're gonna put a chopper in, so if anything does go down, it gets chopped up.
Most of them are putting hooks in on the backside now as well.
Right.
So before it even gets down to the chopper and to the main septic lines, there's hooks that are catching.
Most thing goes down to the sheets like this.
And, and most hooks will catch them.
Sox, t-shirts.
But the.
Commissary paper, all that stuff. Yeah, I think you're right. I think they're gonna put the hook system in plus the chopper, so it might be okay.
Is, is what you're saying is that the, the distance between where the jail is gonna send and where it's gonna tie onto this is gonna collect most of the problems? Yeah.
Yes, it should.
And we surely have risers out there that could be a.
Initial risers are behind the cells.
Yeah.
And that's where the hook system is.
I think we might be.
And then there's usually a job.
Question Steve asked the contractor, who's gonna do it, then stocks on it.
No, I'd say check with engineering, but I, engineering's already been forward and I, I wouldn't think of that big problem.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Definitely double check with him, but I think.
You want me to get back to Gary and say we're working on?
Yeah, I have them here next meeting and we'll get Dusty, Dusty here too.
Okay.
Pretty please.
That's, will you be able to contact the contractor there or them to ask him to come to the meeting? I appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, we can go on down here now through, uh, thank you for indulging me in those items. Baker Tilly engagement letter.
I know we, we didn't have that meeting, or not, we didn't have a meeting. Me who came in and you signed some paperwork, each one of you. Um, and Dustin, the other Dustin, um, Dustin talked about staying with, uh, Mark Hudson, I think it was, and he's very conservative that when he saw the State of Tilly engagement letter, he thinks that maybe this is the better route to go because of the interest and you have a, a Baker Tilly folder to work at. And they're more aggressive. I think it was, difference is two point five and four percent. I think four percent is the Baker Tilly. Or investment.
Okay, I have the Baker Tilly letter here and I have the chart.
He was trying to explain this on the phone. It was, to me, it was kinda hard to understand, but well, just send us a letter of engagement. And he was talking about it during this meeting. And, uh, he tried to call me back, um, the other Dusty. Trying to tell me that this is a good thing to, to go down with and I didn't get a chance to call him back because I have a death in the family this week.
Sorry to hear that.
Yeah. Better brother in law, that's for sure. It's all good. And, um, I've, after what he kinda explained, what I could hear on my voicemail, this is the better option.
Which is the better option?
Baker Tilly.
Baker Tilly?
On the, uh, banker device, uh, you, you have a purpose. It's probably opposite, but we did a little research. There for a while, I thought we was gonna have two different people helping with this and I didn't, I didn't want two, I just wanted one. I did two.
I would only have one.
Yeah.
Now exactly what are they doing?
Um, reinvesting bond money, if that's my understanding. Everything's what they're doing right here, what you got. So we can only make so much money off the bond as it sits and draws interest and then we have to pay. What do you call it?
Rebate.
Rebate money, yeah. Then we have to pay taxes on it. And with my understanding of the Baker Tilly, if they do it properly, we don't have to pay any amount.
That sounds reasonable.
Supposedly look out for it, have it for us.
If they see changes, they'll contact us and stuff.
Right, so we, either you will make a motion on this?
You want that one more? You actually spoke to him, right?
Hey, yeah, I spoke to Dustin Hill. Hi, he called me about you that's great.
Right, he, yeah, I was. Looks like the one you was saying.
I don't know, it was nothing on the app.
Yeah, and you gotta sign on the back.
Probably, but we endorse the agreement with Baker Tilly.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so I have a motion in a second to, uh, engage Baker Tilly for investment services. All in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye. You probably need what, two, Beth?
Well, we just want, I'll scan that one in, yeah.
Okay.
Next item. Courthouse grounds application.
Put ribbons up.
Yeah, put ribbons up.
Good morning.
Yes.
I'm Sue Hartman. Nice morning from the CASA program and we are trying to spread awareness for child abuse awareness for the month of April. So we know we can't put things in the ground, so we're wanting to put some blue ribbons, maybe on the, the rails coming in and maybe on the busygo out there. Just to, we, we generally put pinwheels, the blue pinwheels, and we've been putting those in various areas up here, but putting on the squares and, um, we just wanted to put some ribbons out and, by the news.
And, uh, you would be letting the comet know what the ribbons are all for and everything, right?
Sure.
So, you know.
The comet's working with her.
Yes, yes.
The comet's working with her. I am.
They're going to you, I'm just making sure.
This is what we do.
Yeah.
That ain't gonna hurt us, everything. That ain't gonna hurt us. We're just talking about going.
Oh, no. So we could post some or put some of these in the grounds?
I'm gonna make a motion.
Close to the.
Where would you want them?
You'd have them close to the.
Yeah, so my little Florida guy don't run over, but we have the blue.
Okay.
Saddy all over the yard.
Then do we. Stay there.
I mean, it's generally the month of April. Do you want me then to come and collect all these at the end of April then? Is that what you would want me to do?
Yeah.
If they're still there?
If they're still there.
Still there, I don't know, but, yeah, okay. So we could do the, there's rails all the way around, right, on all four? Or three, I guess, three entries. So we can do that and, and on busygo.
I'll make a motion for, for the pinwheels and, uh, your rail.
Okay, so I have a motion in a second to, uh, approve CASA putting out the, uh, beautiful blue ribbons and pinwheels. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks for sitting through all this.
No problem.
EDC appointment, Brett, you wanna, or you have to handle it.
Yeah, I'll, uh, just to get some context. So we, uh, we do have a vacancy from the county's appointment for the EDC. Um, this would have been the end of George Muir's term in twenty twenty-two. And so we've had a, a great opportunity to get someone on our board to help the county, uh, in Scott Orton and I think, I believe Brett and May had submitted a letter on behalf of Scott. And so I just wanna come up and advocate, um, for Scott's appointment to the EDC. Uh, I think his resume and record speaks for itself. Like, and we're trying to get the EDC in a position to where we have business minded folks that have executive leadership abilities so that when we get a company, we get in the room with them, it's, um, individuals that can speak the same language, um, as well as Scott not only being from Carroll County, having kiddos that go to Carroll schools, but also owns, uh, one of the largest great facilities in the Midwest and in the nation, as well as the rail spur that comes right through the heart of the county, which, uh, we've been actively, uh, pursuing, uh, for going, so.
I need to, um, say that Scott Ayers was appointed to, um, George Muir's spot and ended on the twenty-second, so it wasn't really big, I mean, Scott Ayers was there, but he did tell me he had not been to any meetings.
Yeah, it was my understanding that, just to clarify, that, that that terminated December of twenty twenty-two.
Right.
And so, yes, yeah, so.
We didn't realize that.
Yeah, fair.
I just wanted to make sure the name is, so really is for Scott Ayers.
Scott did want it back and didn't attend the meetings, that was it?
I, I don't think he really realized this yet, but I don't know. I did not contact him.
I'll make a motion to approve Scott Orton to the EDC.
Yeah, I can't imagine, uh, getting anybody better in this position. Outstanding businessman and, uh, good civic leader, community supportive, all that. He's, he's, uh, that's great. So happy you were here. Brett, talk to him and recruiting him. Uh, so I have a motion in a second to appoint Scott Orton to the board of the EDC. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Pass. Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Coming to the meeting.
Well, by the way, Jake. Scott does have the sign.
Okay.
Took it to the highway, right?
Thank you.
Cause he called me about that welcome to Carroll County sign that blew over on the heart of it.
The, the big.
The big sign. It was, it was like inches from the road and it was, where it, if you ran over, so I asked Scott to go out and get it.
Thank you.
Some of the highway department.
We're, we're, they're saying they're gonna come in and, oh, and then you got the big sign laying there that's thousands of dollars that we've invested into. So it's still in good shape as far as I know.
I didn't get to see it, but.
So we'll, uh, we're, we're just waiting on the state, state committee to come back and they're gonna come and hang it, hang it up for us, so.
Should.
I think they have hundreds of inquiries because it's the wind and so they're a little behind on their, their signage, but, uh.
So you just want Scott to keep it at the highway apartment till time?
Yeah, we had worked it out. If they couldn't fit it over there, we were willing to take it up to the industrial park there just to have a place for it to sit. Um, but it looks like we're in good shape, so, and then as soon as the state do advise us that they're aglers, where it's a sign, we're ready to put it up and you can, you can put it up, so.
Good.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve.
And we're down to other county business. Yes, ma'am.
I just wanna clarify that what Steve said that.
Okay.
And ask for, for approval that you want me then to go to the council to ask for the edit funds, edit the state for the work on Thursday.
Okay, you're wanting to ask.
The approval, like what Steve was saying, proposing to ask for the edit funds for the work.
Okay, to make sure that we're all with you. How much is this gonna cost?
Like I said, I think the last quote was like one sixty-three, one sixty-seven. I didn't count, I wouldn't, so I wasn't expecting that today.